Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for July 25, 2024. If we would stand please with a pledge, how would you lead us?
Absolutely. Presentations to the United States of America and the Republic for its assistance, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we are starting off our evening with a presentation from the Historic Preservation Commission Chair Peter Elder, who would like to present to us some information regarding the New York forward proposed here.
Well, I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight and have a good evening. And the Historic Preservation Commission has been meeting the last couple of months about the New York State Board Grant when it came up, trying to think of ways that we might be able to apply for small project grants. It was, really, we had a list of four items we came to, but really, two of them stood out. The first one that you'll see in your packet is, was an idea to replicate and rebuild the Women Christian Temperance Movement's monument that used to be ironically about where it works at right now. And that is a, and it was, no one seems to know exactly what happened to it. As you can see in your packet, it was a really beautiful monument. It was actually a fountain, and you'll probably read some histories about that, about there was a fountain traditionally in the middle of Main Street, even when the village, even when the town was formed before there was a village. So this was sort of a callback to that when it was put in. Then apparently it just got, people lost track of it, and we really don't know what happened to it. But what we'd like to do is propose a small project that would allow us to rebuild it, reinstall it, and make it a fountain again. You know, we did the best we could with giving some broad estimates of the grant. Obviously, I'm on the grant committee, and obviously, we can, as a member of the committee, we can, we can actually ask for clarification of the grant, and we may actually ask the Historic Preservation Commission to give us even a better, pin down a better number, but that's a generalized number that we were thinking of, that $35,000 number. It's based on the idea that we might either go with a cast iron again, or we might, I said 35, I meant 30, I'm sorry. We might either go with the cast iron as it was when it was built, or we could do something a little different. My thought was to try to look at some durability issues here. It's possible one of the reasons why it didn't survive until the present day is because it wasn't durable, and we wanted to have something that will last. We thought about a couple of locations. We settled on the idea of having it out in front of this room, but Carl will just bring it up. We could put it down at the Pocket Park there on, between the Expressway and North Avenue, and that's another great spot. So we rolled into some ideas there as well. We wanted to just make sure that there was ability for people to see it in a different place in the village, because we talked a lot about having a walkable community, and this would be one of those things that people could, you know, walk past in this fountain. Notice a couple of things about this fountain which are kind of interesting, is that, one, it has a major basin that you can see there. And also, see that little basin at the bottom? Hypothetically speaking, we think that, and there's a little bit, there's some language on this, that might be, that might have been there for smaller animals like dogs or something like that to be able to use too. So it had a sort of a multi-purpose idea way before its time. The Women's Christian Temperance is actually a, still a ground. I looked it up today. It's got, it's got a website. So there, the union has about 5,000 current members. It was formed in 1874. So when the village put this in, it was, I don't know what, 35 years old or something? So it was, it's still there though. And I found the email address for the president, and one of my intentions would be if you approve this, and it gets approved by the grant committees, there's a lot of ifs in there, we could actually utilize their talents as well, trying to see if we can get a good design for this from them, and/or just invite them up here, which we can meet as well. So New York State still has a chapter for the Women's Temperance Christian Temperance Union, so it does connect into a lot of good history and some contemporary people as well. So that was our first project. Our second project that we asked to support would be the historic street sign. It's been tossed around for a couple of years, believe it or not, but it's an expensive project. And we didn't want to ask the village to bear the burden of that, but if we can get the grant to bear the burden, what happened is we'd be looking at replacing the signs in the older area of the village that's starting off. We originally had it as a phase project, but there's not necessarily a reason to do that. This kind of thing, we might be able to put them up at one time, but certainly it is a big project. Some villages have these signs, for instance, Pittsburgh has different signs in the village and historic areas than they do anywhere else in the town. It does kind of mark off that area. As you know, Webster does not have a Historic Preservation District, and that's fine, but it would allow us to have some way to provide a clue to people that you're coming into older homes, like mine or Gerald's, so that they know, or Carl's, so they all know, or you, so they all know we're there. So I think that was our second project that we requested. We'd like to try to keep the village guys who happen to do a lot of the work, which is one of the reasons why we tried to kind of bump up the numbers to allow for some extra installations. But again, we might be able to tweak those numbers, see if we can not have J Cap to be the project manager if he's, it actually comes through. So the reason I'm here tonight is because, while we can make public plans, we can't actually fund them. So we would be the village board to kind of allow me tonight, either give me your tacit approval to put the projects in, or take a motion, or whatever you feel comfortable with, so I could send the projects in by email tonight. The deadline is tomorrow. The municipality, the village, has a zero match on this grant according to the rules we set up in the board grant. So we, the village would have to put out the money ahead of time, and then we'd get 100% reimbursement on the backside. So Carly asked about that, and that's definitely one of the great parts about having the ability to be involved in it. So I think that was about all I had. Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a picture of these proposed new signs?
I have one picture on your copy.
This thing that says center?
Yeah, that was a, that was a possibility. That was a brown one. The Pittsburgh ones are, well...
Looks pretty funny to me.
Yeah, so actually, I don't, one of you may have been asking about this. So here's the, so what we propose to do maybe is, again, we don't really know we're going to get the grant, so Don, I don't disagree with you, but what we're thinking about doing is having like a forum, having residents give us some input on what colors they would like to see for the historic, those historic signs. So it wouldn't be just Historic Preservation doing it, but rather getting some input. So it might be different colors. The ones in Pittsburgh are white but on with black lettering, but they're on this really neat ordering, like there's this deep border to it. So they could just be white with black letters and a very cool-looking sign to do it, or it could be a different color, it could be dark green. That's what came up in our meetings as well. So that's, that is just simply a sample of what it might look like, not, not to say what it will look like.
Somebody suggest before the forum that you and I get together and look at the MUTCD and the New York Supplements of the MUTCD, because that specifically lays out signs for historic areas or districts and things like that, and there's parameters that they have in there.
Perfect. Love to. Yeah. I think we just want to make sure we have all the different parties interested in trying to get this done, and obviously get it done in a way that works, is complying with the law, and then it also lets us have some identity to that section of the village. So...
So, and then you got phase one and phase two. But it looks like the 30 signs is for both phase one and phase two.
It is, and...
But it's really not phase one and phase two.
Not necessarily. We don't have to, because we didn't, we thought we would never be able to do it in one phase. So the original plan was to have two phases.
That's just some old.
So that's, that's just some old, but it's, but at least it gives you an idea of where they would be, which is the reason why I included it in the packet.
But the yellow stars and the green stars, the signs would all look the same?
They would all look the same. But we never thought, like I said, we never thought we could do it all at one time. So we were basically trying to say, well, we would, you know, cut the day in half here and have one phase, and then ask the village for money for the second phase, but now if we can get it all at the same time, that even be, that would even be better. I mean, it's going to take time to put them all up, but, but that's what you can see, but that's basically, that shows you the map of where they would be. And they even go down to like Kercher and Baker because the houses there are ultimately owned to them. So, in fact, some of the oldest houses are on Baker. So...
Kercher and North Avenue?
Yeah. Well, we, we didn't, we didn't specifically deal with the ones along the state routes, because we weren't sure, and Jake, that's one reason we have to talk to you obviously about this. We weren't confident we could adjust those signs because they're sitting on state roads, or, so it's, that's going to be something we'll have to look at. So we might not get their permission. I can understand, I can see them not getting their permission. So, so that's, anybody else have any questions?
Do you need a proposal for that?
Oh, I'm wondering if we could pitch that into the signage that we talked about, east-west, coming in, those signs that came and says, "The village are all faded," you know, we talked about it.
That's one of the, one of the public projects is re-mining itself and including those signs. That's one that matters.
Good, good.
Yeah. So the village is putting in a fairly substantial, I think they're putting in one or two projects, is that right, Jake? A couple of projects?
I believe at least two, three.
Two, three, okay.
There was some discussion on, on the correct approach, whether it's kind of lumped together with the small project thing, or the little little project, and then there's some, I mean, I know there's a discussion from the public garden ones. Are those aspects of larger projects, or standalone projects on their own too, so?
Okay. So the village is going to be doing some as well. So this would just be, another, in effect, it's another village, two more village projects, but they're specifically HBC oriented. So that's why we decided to go this direction. And again, they fit into a lot of that, they fit in pretty well to the overall design of what the four grant is about. One's a public garden, which is perfect, and the other one is a wayfinding kind of thing, and that's also right in there. So they work as far as a criteria for the grant. We just have to cross our fingers and make sure we get enough applications for small project grants so they actually can be funded. So, as I'm hearing right now, there's going to be quite a few small projects, small grants, putting in projects.
Peter, I have a question. Have you seen an example, have you, is there an example in any village you know of, of signage that transfers, that they're designing?
Yes. The one I saw that was most happening was Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh.
They do. They have, they have actually separate signs for their village streets, which are, the whole, the whole, almost the entire village is a historic district. So, so when you go from the town, they're green with white letters. In the village, they're white with a different kind of border. The ones at the town are very standard. When you come to the village, they're white with this different kind of border and with black letters, which I didn't really like those too much, but I mean, I could see, they look, they look nice. But our colors in the village are green and yellow. So we could even do a green background with white letters, or a green background with yellow letters, however you, or it works out. But that's why we're hoping to get input when we actually, we don't want to kind of, we didn't want to jump the gun on this because we don't even know if we're going to get a grant, but once we have it, we'd have to be in much better position to get input on what would be happening.
No green and yellow.
I don't want to be...
No, it's not red and green.
Yeah, we have to, I'm just saying, I'm not saying we would do green and yellow, I'm just saying, we just need to get input and see what happens.
Do they have a border of some kind? You know, here's the sign, street, but there's some kind of a decorative border?
Yeah, there are some, although they're a little more expensive. So I didn't, I didn't put that in here, but again, we might be able to adjust the cost, or maybe we can use some funds that the village adds from the Parks Fund or something to supplement some of this as well if it doesn't come out that way. So I think we're, we're trying to be as flexible as possible with this, and we didn't want to have the guys have to install them, although again, if that's what ends up happening, you can use village, the village guys to put the top of the sign. Whole is the same, it's just the top that changes.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Are you looking for an answer from us?
Yes. Is it okay? Well, one reason it's tonight is because we have to be done by tomorrow. I'm not going to submit them to the village hall because I don't want, I don't want to give more work to Heather, so I'm just going to email them in, but...
This week.
So, so if, so that's why I was hoping maybe you could give me your blessing tonight, and then I will move forward to this evening and send them in on the email address. And thank you.
So there's, so there's, are there other projects?
Yes.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Peter, if it's easier for you, you can just drop it off. We really don't have to do much with it.
Okay.
They're, they'll pick it up on Monday, so...
Okay.
Whatever's easier for you.
All right.
If there was a bit of leeway, I think, with the, in the public versus the private, or all of the private, you know, requests due tomorrow, the public, there's a little bit more grace period to develop.
Oh.
Right?
I'd never...
I didn't, you may have, you may have better information than we do.
Anyways, because I don't think we're necessarily ready, but we might be. Jake may have put it together, but I don't know.
Oh, you mean the village's projects?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know, I have to ask them.
You can do that off-line.
Okay.
Well, we need to give Peter the okay, right? Yes, Daryl is, yes, for a motion. If you stop bothering him, so he can spread...
I guess we would stand behind this. We would stand behind this, as well as necessarily funding it, but...
No.
Do I have a motion to stand behind Historic Preservation Commission's proposal to the New York forward regarding both signs and the equation of a historic monument?
All right, with that done, stand behind, or doesn't have to be any word.
I'm not sure what's stand behind.
We would...
Aren't you just taking a resolution to authorize the Historic Preservation Commission to submit two great proposals, one for street signs and one for replica of the Women's Temperance dump?
Yeah, that makes a little more sense.
Well, that is the motion.
What he said.
Yeah, what he said.
I'll make that motion.
I'll set.
Thanks, Tom. Well, we still stand behind.
Thank you.
Peter, the Pocket Park that I thought about, that's on East Main Street, in between the bank and the dentists there, and I, they have a little Pocket Park that's right next to the bank over here.
Oh, so you mean on East Main? Not, not the one down on North Avenue?
No, no, the one on East Main.
Oh, okay. All right, that's not bad either.
At the top of the water tunnel there.
That's pretty close, that's pretty close to Four Corners as well. We were trying to keep it somewhat close, that's a good spot too. So, okay.
I like that spot.
All right, that's a good spot. We do, and we do need more, we do need more on East Main, so that's not a bad spot. But anyways, I interrupted your motion, so I'm sorry.
Trustee Lancy?
Yeah.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
What?
Although you may have to recuse yourself.
I may.
All right. Well, at this point, I would open up the floor for comments and questions to the village board, if there are any here today.
Voice gap.
Okay. Then I will close that part of our meeting, and we will move now to the regular scheduled agenda, board business. And first of all, we have a resolution to approve minutes from the July 9 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll set.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants, which we have in front of you, and I believe on the chair and alley, you looked at this, correct?
Yes, sir. Wait, on, no questions.
Jake, I have a quick question. New York State thinks this would be page three at the sewer. Was that initially part of the project for the sewer, or not?
It was not originally part of, part of that, no. Its front date is, it was quite old, so they made some repairs and fixed it, and a problem child threw a little bit that they're not getting that fixed and operating better.
Have we begun to replace the harness side, south side?
Yes, but there's going to be some adjustment to that. The fence, it was originally a six-foot fence with barbed wire on the top of it. We removed the barbed wire to replace the fence, but the new fence is a six-foot fence, but there's a gap at the bottom, and we want to close up that gap at the bottom. So we're lowering that fence section down because they were on the poles. When the crossbeats go to meeting the poles, I think we're going to take those off, cut the poles down, and lower the fence back down so that it's closer to the ground. So, you know, for security, make sure of that. And we originally were talking about a combination of that and doing some fill along the fence and bringing the grade up a little bit, but I think that's not as desirable.
Not as desirable.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to pay the claim and watch.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have, I hope you've read this, the amendment, resolution to amend the employee handbook, section 3.1 entitled "Travel Policy As It Pertains to Meals." This is in front of you. If you have read through this, the change, you can't see the color of it, but it's there, the travel duration is less than a full working day for these meals to be allowed within the following timeframe. And down at the second paragraph, you have a new line, the new, straight, the lines are a part of the replaced meal policy, and then in addition down, then the note in the final paragraph, I guess you'll call it that. I do like the fact that there is understanding prior to anyone going to a conference, and that it should, it needs to be requested and made known prior to their leaving for the passage. Do you want to amend the policy?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcay?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, you have a service agreement, or services agreement with Wasp, and the change that there was a, in the wording of the prior service agreement, there was a wording regarding the payment, especially in line three, because it was services performed pursuant to this agreement. The village agrees to pay Wasp the sum of $1,500, and it did not have each year, it was simply during the term of this agreement in lump sum. So they read it as being possibly construed to mean in one year, we'll pay them 1,500, which covers until 2027. And the president asked that we delineate that to be clear that it would be each year.
I like it the other way, though.
That would be a little bit more in her favor, however. I believe that we are committed to them. I feel we're committed to them. So, so that is a change. Okay?
Yep.
So this is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the amended Wasp agreement.
I will authorize the mayor to sign.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You now have, in front of you, we're going to have to vote on it, but you have in front of you for your amicus and your late night reading, the budget to actual report to date, where you can look that over. And if I have any particular questions, I'm sure that Danielle would be very glad to entertain a phone call, our new first visit. And that concludes our regular scheduled agenda. And now we will move to our attorney's report. Don, what do you have for us to make?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. And we'll move right on to the Department of Public Works. Jake, what do you have?
Since Don got such a positive response, I have nothing to report.
Wow.
I don't think I've ever heard that.
That's never happened.
All right, I just...
So that means double next. Um, Heather, can you beat that?
We have nothing, sir.
Next, you have a service agreement, or services agreement with loss, and the change that there was a, in the wording of the prior service agreement, there was a wording regarding the payment, especially in line three, because it was services performed pursuant to this agreement, the village agrees to pay loss, the sum of fifteen hundred dollars, and it did not have each year, it was simply during the term of this agreement in lump sum. So they read it as being possibly construed to mean in one year, we'll pay them fifteen hundred, which covers until two thousand twenty-seven, and the president asked that we delineate that to be clear that it would be each year.
I might go another way, though.
That would be a little bit more in her favor, however, I believe that we are committed to them, I believe we're committed to them, so. So that is a change, okay? So this is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the amended loss agreement.
I will authorize the mayor to sign.
Trusty Abolito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer and Trusty Valke?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You now have, in front of you, we don't have to vote on it, but you have in front of you for your clarification and your late reading, the budget to actual report to date, so you can look that over, and if I have any particular questions, I'm sure that Danielle would be very glad to entertain a phone call, our new person visit. And that concludes our regular scheduled agenda, and now we will move to our attorney to report, Don, if you have yours to make.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, we'll move right on to the Department of Public Works. Jake, what do you have?
Since Don got such a positive response, I have nothing to report. I don't think I've ever heard that.
That's never happened.
All right, I just...
Make note of that first. So that means double next. Heather, can you beat that?
I have nothing, sir, other than my niece is here, that's who she is over here, my little helper, this is Amelia, hi there.
You do a really good job if you want to replace Heather on Thursday nights, you're welcome.
What about now?
That's all.
All right, well, that takes us to the end here. I want you to let know that our next village board meeting will be on Thursday, August eighth, at seven o'clock here in Village Hall, and we look forward to seeing as many of you as quickly as possible, and hopefully have a couple of things that we'll let go from tonight to Wednesday.
Nice summer nights, we should start doing it outside there.
You haven't gone outside, East Rochester does that, when it's a nice pleasant summer day.
Do it down on our cartel.
Where do we do that?
Right on the gazebo.
If you own some property, right out in front here.
Yep, or the gazebo.
Or at the gazebo. Okay, good suggestion. All right, well, if nothing else, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leading motion carried. Thank you very much for attendance and watching and listening, and maybe we'll see you in the park next time, but we'll see.